...to go understand barriers to transportation at the elementary level, right? So, we're talking about the same thing.
Right, same process.
Maybe different memberships.
There might be some, uh, right, there might be some different folks when you think about administrators, student family advocates, parents, et cetera, just because we're looking at junior high students versus elementary students.
For me, I think we should propose the same someone process. You just, you recommend the leadership. For me, I just want to start high level with the objective, right? So, I think the first thing is, just like elementary, is we want to study if there's barriers to transportation that impact attendance. This is for our discussion, but I mean, what we did last year is the committee really looked at and got the data to say there was a barrier to transportation and it impacted attendance. Is that true at the secondary level?
In so this case, since we're looking at activity buses, what are your thoughts?
Hold on, I'm not talking, talking transportation, activity buses is one of the other, right? So, first question, is there barriers to transportation? Kind of a subset of that is, I think we want to better understand, you know, are our students actually using public transit and if so, where do they use it?
Joan, you can come up and sit up here if you'd like.
So, that'd be a subset. And then I think, you know, the study would want to include, are there barriers to transportation that impact participation before or after school? I think that's the idea of an activity bus, right? It would be to support the activities that might be before or after school. Could be other things too. Parent-teacher nights or, you know, whatever, but I think those would be three. Are there barriers to transportation that impact attendance? People, are kids using public transportation and are there barriers to participation?
Can I add to that, Chris?
Yeah.
I think we have to go back even further. I think I had asked a question a couple of months ago about what is the current participation of kids, because some of this is going to be about, this is the secondary level. So currently, where the kids are currently going, how much are the kids that we're specifically trying to target that will have barriers to transportation that are currently involved? Because if you are two miles from school, how much are you participating right now? So, it's, this is a more complex than just activity buses, right? There's a piece of here about what is our recruiting and retention of kids regardless? But that's a different topic, but I'm just saying, um, busing is not the only barrier that prevents a kid from participating.
It might, it could be all barriers.
Um, and so, we would need to find out how much kids are currently, why aren't kids participating? You know what I mean? I'm just saying it's deeper than just giving you a ride. It's, it's, those are some of the real barriers about this. So, it's about, so basically, I would say is that the second kind of parallel discussion is what are our barriers to participate in our schools, basically? But for the purpose of the activity bus, it would be figuring out with the kids who are participating, you know, can we figure out where they're falling in our demographics? And then figuring out the transportation barriers.
Does that make sense, Matt?
Yeah. So, firstly, first would be kind of participation number by attendance center, right? And trying to look at that to see, do we have a big variance in, in what that looks like? When we did some initial data pulling that and looking back, because it, I think it was a few months ago.
Yeah, I asked that a while.
Yeah, so we started to try to gather some of that and became a little bit difficult because not every student, you know, is maybe linked in our system to an attendance center. I think we could try to grab some of that and provide some of that if that's what you guys would like to see at some point. We do our best to clean that up.
I just think it's helpful for background purposes in any decision that we make to be able to understand which kids are we're specifically talking about. Because just because I live further away or closer away, that doesn't mean I want to be in football.
Right.
You know, so I think we need to figure out from the kids that we currently have, because that's the only way, I mean, we have to start somewhere with our research about the decision we're going to make. And so, figuring out, I, I remember looking back, I think it was like 20% of our kids who are coming from certain schools were even participating at all. So...
Right, so we can have that, but what I'm hearing you say is that that would only be one piece, right? There might be, just because it's a attendance center doesn't tell the whole story. We're going to obviously have some other data points that I'll look at too for why they're maybe not engaged, because they could be really close, but not participating.
I may need to just survey or whatever.
Some interviews. I have input from students on the list here.
I think we have, I think we have all the information, it's just God breathing in. Asking the people that are connected, asking our kids, you know.
Right.
We live already close away, but you're not participating.
Our student family advocates can help us as we work with the students.
Because we might find out that the barrier is the cost of the equipment more than it is the ride.
The time that it's offered, et cetera.
Right. Because of the offer. If we offer it and nobody gets on the bus because they can't afford to be on the soccer team.
There's some other barriers.
You know what I'm saying? So, it's, it's barriers in general that will speak to our need for activity buses.
Just a little data question I've had. I would be wondering, we've been talking about this in the past in terms of corporate management, but of course, if we could choose some other elementary communities who would keep on the bus, or is this going to be exclusively for certain elementary communities? I'm just not knowing sort of where we're going.
It'd be all about that.
I don't know exactly what to change, sort of how much it costs, I guess. That's down the road still.
I think that's part of, of the discussion of figuring out that. I think that's a part of that. Where, where do we drop off these kids? Because we're obviously probably not dropping people off at the doorstop. The activity buses, at least nationally, research that I'm looking at specifically, they have different areas they're dropping off kids.
Just by class.
And nationally. And there's a lot of research nationally about the specific thing that we can borrow from similar, whether that's, um, North Carolina has a school that ships some of their cars and they currently use activity buses. So, there's an opportunity in that. We need to specifically be able to garner some support as well as information from people who are already doing this.
I just think, folks in Alexandria are probably going to scale it up and you can decide for one, the same time or get further. I really want to enable the experts. That's what we did last year. We enabled the experts to go out and figure this out to the best degree you can, right? And then let's come back and talk about so what we're going to do. Now, if that's the high level objective, I think to some of these questions, I don't like to go too deep necessarily, but I think it's, just like last year, if we came, if we got to end point, it's like January, February. I mean, if you guys need check-ins in between, absolutely, last time you told us when you wanted to come back and check in and chat stuff, and thinking about coming back in January, February, so that you can operationalize it for the 17, 18 school year. Can we get it in the budget when we have those conversations, right? You know, we'd have to be back, you know, early in the calendar year to do that. You know, the budget granters, I'm not sure there's any upfront, but we all understand that you're in competition with classroom dollars. Unless we have other funding strategies like that, Pearl, the, you know what I mean? But it's all in, um, it's all in competition with the same money, so it's going to, you know, there's a need, a need to be compelling and start spending money on it, see what the data is, right?
Well, and I almost see that we're working on kind of two different pieces, right? I mean, I think we want to keep the activity bus conversation moving and identifying what would work there, but I hear Director Deloche kind of talking about here, we're assuming that maybe transportation's a barrier, but there may be a whole other host of barriers when we do some research here that are identified that are not transportation and when it makes sense to port resources into transportation if those are other barriers or actually what's preventing it. And so, I'd say we're going to work on both, if that's what I'm hearing you say.
And this is why I said, let's not jump to conclusions.
Right.
Let's go through the work, let's be done in a minute, right? Let's, the process tells us what.
Okay.
Man, it'd be great if we came back and something like government issue or whatever, you know, because then we could, I mean, there's lots of resources to help with that.
Right.
I mean, I think we can already say, given liberty, given the bus situation, that we know that there is a transportation barrier. Even if this is, you know what I'm saying, for our freshmen, they, their family may have money, but that don't mean they can drive. You know, so I think we can clearly say that there's going to be a transportation issue, especially for our new high school. So, I think that's, which I think is just good.
Let these guys go back and tell us.
Oh, you don't know that? They tell you, you just said. I'm like, what?
What I'm saying, I'm not going to begin any assumptions.
Okay. You don't have to, I'm going to say, I'm going to assume that transportation is going to be a, personally, I believe.
I understand the point, I just, I just think let's go, let's go and see what it does. Joan, is that clear? I'm kind of pointing at Matt because he brought this over beyond transportation, but...
Now, is it like, hey, come on, it's, because it's so fast tonight.
He says he can cover you, so he should.
We're going to leave.
I think at least we've got enough to get started, knowing that we can come back to the board if we need more questions asked between now and that February timeline as that committee begins to work. Last time, more questions came up while they were getting progress, and so that will give us an opportunity to come back and clarify.
Did we sufficiently answer number seven, the activity bus group, separate committee?
What I heard from that was we'd use a process similar to the process that we used last time, that's where we put a committee together with appropriate representatives? Is that sound right?
Well, and there was also some discussion of having discretionary busing for the secondary schools just to get to school. Am I, is that off the table, or is that for a later date, or is that part of this?
There's barriers to transportation. Well, I think that was the first point. There's barriers to, if there's a, transportation is a barrier to attendance, right? I understand that. That, that would be like, definitely.
So, it's, if transportation is a barrier to attendance, if transportation's a barrier to activities and involvement, and if there's other barriers that you're addressing, that's specific to the unit.
So, it's, I mean, two goals. One is good attendance, the other is participation.
Right. We should keep kids engaged and drive attendance and all some other things.
Right, just two, right.
Not that too high expectation then, man, last year was awesome, so.
It was.
We're kind of, you know.
What do I have?
All right, thank you, Joan. All right, well, first, thank you. Maybe we should go around the table and do introductions, but I wanted to start by thanking Rick Grantwood, granters, for having the light. Maybe we should do this more often, never know. Do they go so well? Let's hope so, yeah. Do we do more often? Why don't we go around the table, just since there's new people and get along with each other? Joe, if you want to start, please go first.
Yeah. Joe Crozier, Chief Administrator, Grantwood AEA.
Maria Cashman, Associate Administrator at Grantwood AEA.
Tracy Lieberman, I'm a Regional Administrator at Grantwood AEA, supporting the Iowa City District.
I'm Tina Hoffman, I'm a Regional Administrator for Grantwood AEA, serving the Iowa City District.
I'm Kim Colvin, I'm the Board Recording Secretary.
Amy Gortmeier, Assistant Superintendent.
Matt Dugner, Assistant Superintendent.
Dave Frye, Chair.
Phil Hemmely, Board Director.
Steve Decker.
Josh DeWes, Director.
Paul Ressler, Director.
Brian Kerschler, Director.
Russell, Director.
Steve, Deputy Superintendent.
I think, you know, from a process standpoint, I think Joe would provide a lot, a lot of questions, and probably want to give you some, in terms of how we answer and get into the discussion, but if you want to leave, that'd be understandable. That'd be great, and I sent a doc, or everyone has a document in front of you, I believe, is summary, summary of services. And what we did is try to prepare this in response to the questions that we received last Tuesday. Just, we did the introductions, but before, as we go around the table, I do want to make sure with us tonight, and our table's a little bit small, to get our big group around with you, is Jim Green is with us. Jim Green is our Board President of Grantwood AEA, and with him is Marilyn Wertz. Marilyn Wertz, as you all know, I think, is a board member for Grantwood, represents the Iowa City School District on the Grantwood Board. So, they can also answer additional questions or help us tonight if that's important, so...
You guys should come on up and sit right there.
So, just a little preview of what we think we're, we're going to try to do in the discussion for you tonight, is we're going to give an overview of the funding structure, which in this case, this always comes up, is how much money's going there and what's it being spent for? And we're going to try to get to that and help you to understand where that's going. Really, a detailed discussion on special ed funding, ed services funding, and media services, as well as any other financial relationships between the agency and the school district. Then we'll get into special education, we'll talk about the compliance a bit, how we got there, how we move forward with that, and look at some service delivery, from the district service plans to the general education programming, some of that. So, everything we're going to try to bring forward is from questions we received last week from Steve, when, when we met to try to go over what we wanted to try to prepare for you tonight to be helpful. Just to give you a little bit of background, I started five years ago at Grantwood, so I'm starting my sixth year here. And in my very first meeting with Steve, I met with him in, in July or August that first year, and one of the things that we were both committed to was developing a stronger relationship between the AEA and the school district, which tells you coming in, I've always heard, it's always been a little bit of a difficult relationship. And Steve and I wanted to get the most out of the AEA services and the most out of, that the district could get out of those services. So, and you know, I would say, before the compliance thing, we would say over the past five years, our relationship was better than it ever been. Now, that's just, I, it's just a judgment call. I can't, I don't have any data that proves that, but I think Steve and I would both probably say that. So, when I was with you in November, we did a profile of services, and some of the board remembers that, and I, I was asked by Director Yates at the time, I believe, says, is Iowa City a good partner? And I said, yes. And I believe that Iowa City has been a good partner. You know, if you, if you take the special education compliance, that's been a very difficult situation for both the school district and for the AEA. I mean, as, as you work through that difficulty and knowing what that's meant to your district, it's not, it's not a positive thing for the AEA in any way either to get there. So, that aside though, there's been a lot of other good property things have been going on, from things like the, the VAS PD that takes place in the district, to the TLC work, to some of the social, emotional, behavioral work that's being done in the buildings this, this summer, the technology PD that Matt worked with our folks, and we had, I think, five or six of our consultants that were in this summer to do PD in that. So, you know, we believe that the AEA and the school district can move forward in a very positive way to benefit students. So, tonight's discussion really is, I think is really important to help you understand the actions by the AEA, and we welcome that opportunity to share with you. And while some of the information demonstrates the professional challenges we experience as we work through this complex situation, we want to be clear, the support provided by the AEA is readily available today as it was yesterday. We're not going to walk away, we're still going to be a partner with the school district. And I know that the AEA staff have turned their focus on moving forward. What do we go, do to move forward to benefit the school district? And I think we have some good positive forward movement already in areas that were cited by the DE, and we're working together to, to take on those challenges. So, as we look through our past night, I want to make it, I want you all to know that we're eager to move beyond those challenges, so we can begin the important work and strengthen our partnership with the Iowa City School District. So, if you turn to page two, and I know that Steve provided a document to you that give an overview of AEA funding and the flow-through mechanism that's in your, in your aid levy worksheet, right? Every year you see that flow through dollars that are in there, correct? Just a little background, you know, the AAAs were created in 1974. They were created because of a, a federal law called Public Law 94142, that give rights to students with disabilities. That was the first part of IDEA. And because of that, the, the state of Iowa didn't really have a good structure to serve this, serve students with disabilities in the state. And some of the larger areas had county-wide schools that had some service, others in rural areas had no service for kids with special needs. So, the, so it was created, the AAAs were not giving the right to collect taxes. So, they set up a mechanism through local district budgets, so that money would flow through to the AEA. And it should be noted that the money that you see in the aid levy worksheet today didn't exist in 1974. Okay? So, that wasn't money, I don't want you to think about it, it was money that was rerouted from the district, taken away from the district, that wasn't really true. It was money that wasn't in the budgets at that time, and then made part of the aid levy worksheet to have that come in. So, if you turn to page three, or excuse me, it's page four. What we've tried to do for you is, because one of the questions, we have an audit, well, this is our best effort. It's never been done before, I don't know if any other AEA in the state has broke this out as complete as we've tried to do for you tonight. It's not required by the code, it's not required that we do this per district, but at the same time, I think it's valuable information. You can see on here, as you look down, the amount of special ed funds that are, that are, that flow through to the AEA is 18,696,000. It's at $282 per student. And then you see the revenue that's produced based on that 282 per student for Iowa City was 3,639,122 dollars. Or 19.46 of the population of our AEA and of that special ed budget. And then you also saw just above that, federal IDEA Part B funding, 652,000. That's actually funding that comes from the state directly to the AEA, and that comes back to the school district, and the school district has the right to spend that 652,000 in a manner they chooses to serve students with special needs. For a total of $4,291,000 that's coming, that is funded to the AEA and then that flows through. You can see on here, we try to list out every FTE, every position that serves, from speech pathologist, you see there's 14.2 speech pathologists, and how much that calculates in salary and benefits. Down, going right down to the bottom of the page, and all of that staffing and totals, well, it doesn't total, um, yeah, subtotal of staffing is 4,236,000. And then below that is all the other special ed services that the, the district has access to, pays for, gets a part of, and comes down further to the bottom, you see a total value of 6,293,000. Okay, so, if I go back up and I say that collectively, there was 4,291,000, and we spent 6 million, that would be a good question for you to say, that doesn't make sense. How can you spend an almost 2 million more dollars on Iowa City? The Grantwood AEA has also provided grants from the Department of Education for, for federal funds for IDEA to provide intermediate services. Those are called, what federal funds called, Part B, Part C, and 619. We give between 10 and 12 million dollars. That makes up that difference between what school districts flow through and what we actually spend on the district. Does that make sense? Okay? And then another question was, what's the salary and benefits of our staff? You see that right at the bottom of page five. All contracted staff means everybody that's a certified staff member has a licensed degree. That average salary is 62,416, or with benefits, and I know that for all of us, that's the most important thing, right? It's the total cost of the employee is 81. You see full-time contracted staff and then Iowa City staff, and Iowa City staff is actually just a little bit lower. That's probably because of some recent retirements in the last few years. We have several new speech pathologists and new school psychologists that are working in the Iowa City School District, which means that cost of the employee...
Like, the school district, we publish every teacher's salary and everything, are yours published and public record?
They're not published, they're, they are public record, they're just not published. The AAAs are not required to do that. I think the press system though publishes it every year, they have in the past, so.
Okay.
But we're not, we're not required to, but I mean, we posted in our board minutes every year, so.
Yeah, we can get a copy of it.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yep. All right, and then, and then page six. One of the questions was, can we see how Iowa City looks compared to the rest of the districts in the amount that flows through for special education? And so, you can see on here, it shows you every district and the percent of the funding that comes into Grantwood. With Iowa City being 19.46, you see Cedar Rapids is the largest at 24.86, and then down the line. Page seven takes you to the two other categories, and, and these two categories do actually attack the district budget more than the special ed flow-through does, because this is all property tax. Okay? So, as you see on there, and this is educational services, it generates for the agency 4.2 million dollars, 5793 a student in the AEA, and that is all property tax dollars. What that means is that when that flows through, the department of management withholds those funds and then wraps them back to the AEA. But those are actual property tax dollars on ed services and media both, okay? Also, that took place in 1974 when they said, we need to do more than special ed, and that's the reason this came about. This gives you the listing of the different people in the ed services arena that are assigned directly to the Iowa City Schools, and then the other things that the ed services budget supports. You can see that generated 830,000 revenue, this has a total value of 976,000 revenue. So, you can see that we're actually spending more in Iowa City. Now, you might look through some of those and say, well, I don't know that we use one of those very well, or whatever it might be, but that's still the way it's, it's broken out. And I'll keep going unless you have questions. So, and then on page nine is the final one, kind of in the budget breakout, that gives you media services, media and technology services, and then breakout once again of the instructional technology consultants that served the school district, and then all the different things out of the media library or technology that's on here. Comes up to 755,000 generated, 746,000 we came in our best auditing attempt, so. All right, so that's, and, and you know, I would just encourage you to go through those, look through those and say, you know, what are the things I didn't even know about that we had access to, or do we use very well? And you know, some of these are, it's really good to point out, I think, when you look at the AEA online statewide digital resources, and you see that, that is 39,000 we spend for Iowa City share on 14,000 students, but quite frankly, if Iowa City was going to buy those alone, that'd cost you 200 or 300,000. And I always use this example with, with folks when I'm talking about those statewide resources. SERS Researcher is a high school research database. Some of you that work in a high school know SERS Researcher maybe. It's a great database. When I was on the committee that approved that about 10 years ago to buy it statewide, there were six high schools in the state of Iowa that are buying SERS Researcher. We bought it from the state of, for the price that six high schools were paying for. So, it just gives you, people just weren't buying it, it was just too expensive, except for a few, but when we, when we did that statewide buy, we were able to pull that down. Another one in here I just pointed out is, um, I hope I can find it. Well, it was on the internet aggregation, and part of that internet aggregation in the past, Grantwood has paid 250,000 dollars a year to do internet aggregation for the entire AEA. So, you flow through your internet through us. A year ago, the chargeback was 21,000 dollars, because that's what, would cost us about 330,000 dollars for internet aggregation. This year, because we, we did a new bid in the state, collectively, all nine AAAs bid internet aggregation through, and we purchased that through the ICN, it's going to actually fall below 250,000, so there won't even be a bill back to Iowa City next year, which is really good news and for all school districts in a whole, so.
I think this is the thing you shared in November, right? I mean, AEA is really, by scale, whether you look at statewide or the U.S., we provide scale, we have resources we wouldn't have, and especially for the smaller districts statewide.
You know, we, we have this conversation all the time, we say, well, could a, could a large district do that on their own? Yeah, they could. Could they do all of it on their own? Probably not. You couldn't, you couldn't get the same bid that you get for the online resources. You couldn't go out and do internet aggregation, and I know that we even looked at that, would it be cheaper if Iowa City went right through the ICN? The ICN says, there's no way. That would cost you a ton more money. So, it's, it's that sort of thing, that you try to accomplish and you try to make sure you're really looking at that. Now, there, we do do fee-for-service at Grantwood, and one of the questions was, over and above the flow-through, are there things that you purchase? Yeah, there is. Yeah, there is. We do student information consortium, Power School. You have kids on Power School, right? Okay? Or, and you've looked at that account. Now, that costs you last year, seven dollars a student. If you went to buy that from Pearson, or it's not Pearson, owned by Pearson anymore, it's owned by a private company, but it would cost you almost nine dollars a student. And then you would lose things like e-registration, you would lose school health, you would lose the vault, and you'd lose the at-risk database that's part of the student information system. Those are all programs that have been written by programmers at Grant Wood. They're added on. All of our schools in the consortium get those free of charge. So, you can just see, that's another savings, even though it's a cost to the district. You spend eighty-three thousand dollars last year on, on Power School. The VAS kits, you spend eighty-five thousand dollars. Those are renting those kits that come out, and the training that goes with those kits, and then they're refurbished the next year, and they come back out again. They're the latest in, the latest in the science kits that meet the new science standards also, so. Professional development, what Iowa City signed up for was a fee of twenty-one thousand dollars. Print shop, you had used the print shop at twenty-three thousand, three hundred eighty-two dollars. Career Connections is a, that you used in the past, that was billed to the district a hundred and forty-four thousand. That was just a flow-through, basically, through the A A. Next year, the A A will not be a middleman, which means your cost for that program will be reduced, even though you'll be paying for it directly, you're, you're going to have a reduced cost. And then the vital program, which is the students with disabilities that have I E Ps that attend Kirkwood, that's a flow-through or billed through to, back to the district of eighty-one thousand, so. Just gives you an idea of some of the things that you're purchasing outside. Many of those are done cooperatively, and it's a better price. Or, we always look at it and say, excuse me, if we couldn't do that for you, or for all of our districts, of what somebody in the private sector could do it for, we should not be in the business. We should let the private sector do it. So, we've been able to demonstrate that. One of, one of the questions was around, on, on the finance, was, does the A A provide reimbursement for any Iowa community school district staff? We do, we do administrative staffs, special education director, we provide a hundred thousand dollars a year in a contract to the district for, for that. And the reason is, we do that in Cedar Rapids, we do that in Iowa City, the two largest districts. You have two regional administrators that do that out in, in the smaller districts. They have less, a smaller number of students than they do in Cedar Rapids and Iowa City. And that's why we pay for that, to keep us on the same page and do that work together. There are some certified staff. We do a point six F T E in science and a point five reading recovery that we reimburse the district for, and a point two vocational. So there are one point one, thank you, one point one F T E that we provide back to the district that, that meets the needs, so. Again, on finance, one of the questions was, if the district contribution is twenty percent of the flow-through or a little less than that, and they have unique needs, could they get secure funding for those unique needs? And, you know, the funding we get is used and allocated to provide mandated special education services that the A A is supposed to provide, those child find services, which includes speech pathology, includes school psychology, includes social workers and all those type of services. But we have provided funding for special projects in the past, like, we did some special education coaching funding for Becky Brown for the district. We did a U of I preschool speech program that we provided funding for this year, and for the teacher leadership, cognitive coaching that we're bringing in, that's coming into Iowa City that you're contracting for, but we're providing some of the funding for that program. So, just gives you some ideas. We do do some special funding when it, when it makes sense. We look at those with the regional administrators and the administration and say, can we fund that? We have the funds to fund that, and we will. And, you know, can the funding be used to hire A A staff or, or Iowa City staff? Yes, they can. We try to do that on a project-by-project basis, and, and, because for the most part, it probably can't be ongoing, because we don't have the budget at the A A. We're actually overspending our budget too, on an annual basis, so we're actually spending into our reserves, so therefore, we don't have that type of amount of dollars to do a lot of special projects. One of the questions was, do we fund positions in other districts like we do in Iowa City? And with, the only other district we fund a position in is special education in Iowa City. That's a hundred thousand dollars that Iowa City and Cedar Rapids both get. And, and Cedar Rapids, we, we do two point six F T E for certified staff, where Iowa City with one point one. But when you look on, when I look through the list, they don't get the math consultant, they don't get the literacy consultant, and all of a sudden, it, it was actually, it was kind of a push in just the way we've, we've done that. And it's kind of been a story called, that was going on in both districts before I came, or, so we've kept that in place. And then, there was one that, one question that asked about, can we set aside five percent or three hundred thousand dollars for special projects? We'd love to do that, but in our budget, we have to still do the mandated services that are, that are, we have to provide, and there's not additional dollars to do that. We will always look at special projects if they make sense, and we'll try to do that. And we would certainly like for the district to collaborate with other schools like Cedar Rapids and College. We're glad to do that, facilitation of that. And there is an annual meeting where the special ed directors across the state of the large urban districts come to DuBois with the special ed directors from the A As to talk about issues that we're working on statewide. So, gives you a little bit on finance. So, I'm going to stop there on finance and just open up any questions, and then we'll kind of move to Maria for some special ed programming and compliance, so.
Well, first off, thank you for coming, and thank you for providing us with some insight on where our six point three million dollars goes. One question I have right off the top is, when I spoke with Amy Wilson, Chief Bureau of School Improvements, the Iowa Department of Ed today, I asked her if the situation with Iowa City and, and with A A, or with the A A had ever happened before. And she's, and I wrote it down, never has this happened, ever, to her knowledge. This is, this is a once-in-a-lifetime event. And I'm kind of, you're doing a good job of trying to present that everyone's getting along, but this is an extreme circumstance when our paid advocate turns us in. Can you just give us, you know, just a brief reason on, what was, what was your determining factor to go to the State Department of Ed to remedy the situation?
Well, actually, I think we'll just jump into the next part, because she's going to, Maria's going to review what got us to that point, and we share general supervision with the Department of Ed for special education. She can go through that exact point for you.
But you're also our paid advocates. You're supposed to be looking out for us.
Both, yeah.
So, with that in mind, I'm going to jump to answer your question and go to the timeline. We did have a question from one of you regarding, it's, the question was, provide a timeline as to events which led Grant Wood A A to contact the State Department concerning our special ed program. So if you turn to page eleven, there's a timeline there that, it, it's rather detailed, but it's detailed because there's, there were a number of things that, and a lot of work that went into where, where we are right now. So I'm going to try and lead you through this. I started with September, October of 2014, which is two years ago, just referencing that in, in 2014, around count, which is in October, we were identifying issues. I meet monthly with Carmen. I know Tina and Tracy meet also regularly with various people in the district. I also meet with Becky Furlong when she was here, Amy, Steve. And at that time, we were identifying issues, but we were resolving them, or we were at least moving forward with them. And that's similar to every other district that we have. We serve thirty-two districts. Issues are identified all the time. We work through them, we talk about them, we get them resolved. So, back then, things were going, were going okay. Then, in September and October of 2015, which is this last fall, around count time, we began receiving at the A A a large number of amendments for I E Ps. And I want to be clear, there's nothing wrong with a large number of amendments. Amendments, there's, there's nothing non-compliant about large numbers of them. But when we started getting more than what we typically get, I called down to Carmen and said, hey, is there something going on that I need to know about?
And when you mean amendments, is that waiting changes of students?
Some of them were waiting changes, some of them were clarification documents. It was any change that was made to an I E P that required documentation.
So, and.
So it could have been kind of anything.
And properly filled out I E P.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Like if an I E P was filled out inappropriately or incompletely? Is that what you?
It could have been, but I don't want to imply that.
Okay.
It was, so an I E P was completed, let's just pretend, in April of 2015, and then in September, there was some kind of change that was, that needed to happen to that I E P, where an amendment was completed to document that change. It's as simple as that.
And, and if you can familiarize me, because this isn't something that I deal with on a daily basis, but when there's any change to an I E P, isn't there a new meeting and everything like that? I mean, once, once an I E P is agreed upon, any changes or alterations prompt a new meeting?
Frequently, there are new meetings. Most of the time, there are new meetings. There are instances when there are very minor changes that might be made to an I E P where there wouldn't be an amendment. An example might be if a goal is tweaked, so if a student is making progress in reading, and they increase the, the level that we're trying to get the student to, that might be at a, an amendment without a meeting. But anything that's substantive, any change that's substantive to an I E P would require a meeting.
Is there a legal rule that determines which thing requires a meeting?
It's in the administrative rules, the rules for special education. It's, it's online, but it's a thick book if you print it out. If you, anybody wants to see it, we can certainly provide that.
So, but there still has to be follow-up family?
Correct.
If it's a small.
Correct. And that amendment is designed to be a written document that is delivered to the family, so that they know what changes were made and agreed to, and that it's also in the I E P system, so that if we ever have to go back and kind of recreate history, we have the written document.
So my understanding is that even a small change, parents have to agree to.
Correct.
This small change.
Correct.
That can actually be, that has to be done first.
Correct. So, we had some discussions. I visited with Steve, let's see. Okay, so there were a large number of amendments. I had some.
Can I ask one more?
Yeah, yeah.
So, normal, on a percentage basis, what's normal and what's large?
At this point, it was, it was, we didn't count, but, but it was large enough that it caught my attention and it caught my facilitator's attention, who is, she's in charge of I M S, of our, of our I E P system.
So there's no upper control limit that says this is normal, this is abnormal?
No.
It's normal at least.
At this point, yes. At this, if you want to know the exact number, we can get that for you, but it's, it was larger than what we would have anticipated, significantly larger than what we would have anticipated. So that was the first red flag. Had some conversations with the district, talked to Steve on November fifth, talked to Becky Furlong on November sixth, and just visited with them about that. Again, let them know that there wasn't anything non-compliant about the large number of amendments, but it certainly was something that I was keeping an eye on and thought that it was odd. Then, on November thirtieth or thereabouts, oh, let me back up. Special education count occurs the end of October, okay? And count is when we count how many students in our districts have I E Ps. And, and there's a waiting system. Tell me if I'm going, if you guys know all of this, but there's a waiting system for each student where they're identified as a level one, level two, or level three student. And I can go into that in greater detail in a few minutes. But, so that, that count happened at the end of October. There's a large amount of data that is gathered at that point. And so, the end of November, there's roll-up data that I look at. And when I mean, when I say roll-up data, I mean, I look at various data pieces from that count data for all thirty-two districts that we serve. And I just look for trends, is there anything that looks unusual that I need to be thinking about or concerned about? And there were some, a couple of significant red flags that, that went up as a result of that data for Iowa City. The first one was that the overall number of students in special education in Iowa City went down by forty-five students. Okay? So forty-five, fewer students were receiving services, but the waiting for students in Iowa City went up almost a hundred and forty-three points. Okay? That in and of itself, if you are, work in special education, would make you kind of sit up and take notice. So I did, I sat up and took notice, and then I did compare other districts within Grant Wood to that. And the next highest district was a, another kind of suburban kind of a district. They had an increase of twenty-eight points versus your hundred and forty-three, but their number of students served in special education went up by thirty-one. So I'm going to say that again, just in a different way. Your students went down by forty-five, the other district went up by thirty-one, their weightedness went up by twenty-eight, yours went up by a hundred and forty-three. So there's a bit, that's a big jump. That got my attention.
Just can I ask quickly, is there anything unusual about the number of students going down, or is that just a normal expectation?
You know, the forty-five going down didn't, doesn't bother me so much, but when the numbers went down for, for raw number of students, and then the weightedness went up that much, that seemed kind of odd.
But the problem with the waiting, is that an indication that we just didn't wait students strong enough earlier?
I can't answer that question. That was one of the things that was, that's possible. But if, the, so let me try and take that question, then we'll go back to the timeline, if that's okay.
Sure.
So, the, the way that the waitings happen, the I E P team, and this is on page twelve at the top, the waitings are a funding mechanism.
Right.
And it's not a dollar-for-dollar kind of a system. So, we wait kids, level one, which is the lowest funding amount, and they receive probably the fewest services. Level two, and then level three are typically our most severe students who need significant resources and significant services. The I E Ps are waited after the I E P team meets and after the I E Ps are finalized. And so the waitings are based solely on what's documented at the I E P.
And is, isn't Grant Wood A A part of the I E P teams?
We are.
And don't you sign off on every single one?
We are part of every I E P team.
And, and you sign off on all of those?
I'm not sure what you're, what you mean by sign off. We are part of every team and make decisions.
You're present at the I E P meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And you have authority over the Iowa City School District. And why is it, why, why are you not being investigated or implicated in violent, in these violations along with us?
What I can tell you is that we identified, and if you want me to complete the whole story and then answer your question, that might be easier. Do you want me to do that, or do you want, okay? Because I'm, I'm not trying to put you off, but I think there's more information that you need in order, and then we can go into some of those other types of things. So let's go back to the timeline, if that's okay. I'm not trying to frustrate you. Joan, you want to?
No, you're, you're doing fine.
Okay. So.
Now, all these numbers you just quoted, there was an accounting issue the year before, or something like that, were netted and out, or was it?
The, I don't know anything about the accounting issue. I do know that you had an OSEP visit three years ago. As a result of that, there was a lot of work that was done. As a result of that, there was a lot of work that was done around special education. There were some issues that were identified.
Probably with the budget impact where, yeah, we didn't get 80 students counted in the fall of '14. But that's a budget issue versus the numbers we're talking here, or...
No, it's the same thing.
Oh.
That's why they noticed such a huge increase, is because they weren't counting the year before.
Right. So 143 was really 53 or something?
Yep.
Okay.
So, so at that point, then there was one other red flag when I looked at the, at the count numbers. In 2014, Iowa City schools had 116 Level 3 students, so your most significant students. A year later, in 2015, you had 216. So your number of Level 3 students increased almost by twice.
And who owns the waiting?
We do. The AEA does. Well, we, we do the waitings, but the, but the level of services is what drives it. And that occurs, the IEP teams own that.
Sure.
So I don't want to make it sound like we decide. We only determine it based on whatever is written in the IEPs.
What's the difference?
Yeah, yeah. So, huge increase in Level 3. The only reason I'm telling you all of this is because it's important for you to know what the red flags were that made me go deeper.
So just going back the year before that?
Mm-hmm.
Our Level 3s were 171. And in 2014, it was 116. Shouldn't that have been a red flag that suddenly there was a 30% drop?
Yep.
2013 to 14 in Level 3s?
And the reason that I didn't go deeper that year was because you all had just gone through your OCR visit. And as a result of that, there were a number of IEPs that needed to be reviewed because of your OCR visit. Those IEPs were reviewed and your numbers did change. There was a reason for that. It was very easy to point to that. We did research into it. We said that's what it is. And so there was no reason for me to go deeper. This year, there was not, there was no event like that that anyone could point me to that explained it. And so that's why it became a red flag that prompted me to have to go deeper. I mean, that is my, that is my responsibility as the special education director for the AEA.
Understood that a 90%, Joe, and the Level 3 is to be, whoa, what's with that?
Right.
But looking at the context of the previous year, it was 30%. You might say, well, actually, I met Jamie 15, which is a 30% increase in Level 3 over a two-year time span as opposed to a 90% increase over a one-year time span. Correct. Am I correct in making that statement?
I would want to look at that a little bit deeper. But based on what you're saying, I understand your point, yes.
So from 171 to 221 over two years is an addition of 50 students, which is about a 30% increase over two years' time. So the blip is not the up, the blip is the down between statistical...
I don't particularly agree with that. I understand the point that you're making. I do agree that your numbers have fluctuated greatly in the last couple of years. I think there's rationale for that, for some of it. I was trying to understand why it was jumping like that as much as it was. It's unusual.
Regardless, you required to look into it.
Correct.
Yeah, but I mean, like I say, like I said earlier, it's, we can look at it and say it's unusual. It could have been because we just didn't wait strong students heavy enough in the first place.
And the question...
And at that point, we're getting undercompensated, right? I mean, we're not getting as much money as we should. And then if we evaluate and we say, we have students that should be heavily weighted, then all we're doing is catching up and getting where we should have been in the first place.
It's still a documentation issue.
Well, I understand, but you're in every single one of those meetings.
If we have students who the documentation doesn't, is not, is not clear, the resources that are being put towards that student, all we can do is wait what we see on the IEP. So if this, if this issue is an attempt to catch up, so to speak, then there's an issue around being clear with parents of what services their students are receiving. So there's, there's still issues there that need to be delved into. I'm not trying to make this a bigger issue than what it is. But no matter which way I turned in order to try and kind of resolve it, it's still brought up another, it was always just, okay, then, then, then there's this issue.
And clearly, the, the number of waitings that went up didn't cause the noncompliance. It was issues within the IEPs that caused the noncompliance. If the numbers went up, the IEPs would have been fine, then there wouldn't have been any noncompliance.
Right. Thank you for that. That's a good point. This only made me look deeper. The issue, there was no noncompliance identified around waitings. It was, that was just the red flag that made me go deeper. The noncompliance was found in the IEPs. So at that point, I visited with Steve. I visited with Amy on the 3rd and Becky on the 5th, letting them know that I was going to go deeper into the data to try and figure out what was happening. I notified the Department of, the Department of Ed at that point. That is a part of my process. Because we're partners in general supervision, my process is to first identify the district because they're my partner. I then notified the Department of Ed because they're the second prong of the stool in this. And then, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One, they're my partner. Also, I wanted to review with them some of the red flags that I was seeing to make sure that I was thinking about it appropriately, that I wasn't being unfair. You know, is this really the issue that I think it is? And they affirmed for me that indeed, this is your responsibility and you need to go deeper. And so I did. I visited with Becky and Amy on the 10th regarding what I was finding preliminarily. And then I met with the entire cabinet, Iowa City Cabinet, and gave them a draft of my report on the 15th of December. On the 17th, I met with Steve.
Could you just, the cabinet, I mean, the entire administrative team, or...
Yes, I would say Steve, Steve was there, Carmen was there, Becky, Amy, Matt.
You mentioned Chase. I'm sorry, Chase.
You might, yeah, I can't remember exactly. If you want me to go back into my notes, but it was, it was pretty much the entire cabinet.
Did you take notes on that meeting, or the discussion notes and things like that?
Yes, yeah, I have those.
Fantastic. Can those be provided to the board as well?
I gave them a draft of the AEA report. And then I met with Steve again on the 17th of December, gave him another draft. There were some things that the cabinet requested on the 15th. We worked through that, made a few updates. Then, kind of, I think, an important meeting happened on the 21st, where Steve and I got together because there was an issue around the deadline for this, when things were going to be due. At that time, in my conversations with the department, we had some thought, some concerns that as Iowa City was having meetings with parents, that there could be, as they clarified what services were necessary for, for these students that we had some compliance issues with. There were some concerns that as those, those services were clarified, that the waitings might change. They might go up and they might go down. We didn't know. And so there was a concern about what this might do to the budget for Iowa City. And we wanted to be open about that. And we tried to just, and so in order to, if there were going to be changes that were going to be made to waitings, and if we were going to try and get that done so that it didn't impact the Iowa City budget, they had to be done by January 22nd. This was December 21st. I obviously had, well, maybe not obviously, but I had some heart palpitations taking that to Steve because, you know, 30 days is, I knew that was unreasonable. But I wanted to be open about the potential budget issues. So as we talked about that, Steve and I came to agreement that the January 22nd date was completely unreasonable. And so we agreed to make all corrections due by June 1st. And there were three reasons why we agreed to do that. First, we wanted to get the issue resolved within this school year so that we could start 2016-17 with a clean slate. We also recognized that there's staff turnover in every district, and Iowa City's a large district. We wanted to try and have staff that were, that knew about the problem, help us fix the problem so that new staff coming in wouldn't have to deal with this. And then we also knew that this was the best thing for parents and for families and for kids. And as we always do, we always try and keep the kids forefront in every decision. And so we said, let's try and get this done by June 1st. And so we agreed to that. And so I then revised the letter to reflect the June 1st deadline, sent it to the department to make sure that I was on the right track, that everything was okay. They approved it, and I then sent that to, and gave it to the district on January 4th.
Can I ask, what is the usual deadline for that type of scenario?
I have the authority to go up to a year. And I could have done that. In this case, we decided not to do that for the three, for the three reasons that I just outlined about best for kids and trying to start the school year with a clean slate. And at that point, the district and the AEA were in agreement. And so we thought that we were moving forward. January 4th, I met with Carmen and Amy to discuss the citations letter, and we agreed to provide the professional development, that the AEA would provide professional development to the district staff. And then on the next day, Amy called and just said, we've had some discussions. We need to put a hold on the professional development. And I was fine with that because we had until June. So it was only January. Great. So we didn't really hear anything for a while. And then on February 22nd, Joe and I met with district administration. And again, it was the same kind of group of people. So I think the people were maybe almost identical to the earlier meeting. And we came to agreement on how we were going to move forward. And we agreed at that time to provide professional development for staff on March 10th and April 7th. Both of those trainings happened, and we had great response from the district. Large majority of your special ed teachers were there, so we really appreciated that. April 7th...
One of those was just before spring break, right? Was that the March 10th?
Uh, that probably sounds right. April 7th, then, we did the final training. And on that date, we also received a letter from Mr. Merly to the AEA that let us know that the district had engaged a third party and had retained legal counsel. And that it didn't, basically saying that they were, didn't think that it was appropriate to call those IEP team meetings in order to meet the June 1st deadline. We also received a letter from an attorney at Lane & Waterman that the district had retained, basically stating the same thing, saying that the AEA was correct in the, in the items that had been cited, but that they, that the attorney did not believe it was necessary to convene IEP meetings.
That was Lane & Waterman?
Correct.
Who was the other attorney?
That's the only attorney I know of. The first letter was from Mr. Merly to the AEA.
Okay, so you, you guys only received letters from Lane & Waterman?
Correct.
On April 7th, it says, AEA receives letters from IC district attorney.
Lane & Waterman?
That was Lane & Waterman, yes. Okay, I was thinking that only AEPs, not the other...
So at that point, we forwarded these, these letters to the department and said, we need some assistance. It does not appear that the district feels able to comply. And so we don't, we need some help to know what to do next.
And in your experience, have you ever been in a situ, well, you've been in situations like this before with districts where you gave them a deadline and they had to comply?
Correct.
Is this the first time somebody lawyered up and...
Yes.
Okay. And in your view, did that take it to another level?
Yes.
Okay. At that time, how was your relationship with the superintendent and director of special ed? Were you guys talking, or were you not talking, or was it emails?
I had seen, I had seen Mr. Merly at superintendent meetings on a monthly basis. And we had always visited and exchanged, you know, information. I had monthly meetings with Carmen and with Amy. And we were addressing issues not as related to this as what I would have liked, but I knew that the district was trying to work through some things. So I was waiting for that to happen. So we were still meeting. So at that point, the department sent the district a letter stating that the corrective actions needed to be completed by the June 1st deadline. And they, they wrote a statement at the end, "Failure to complete this relatively modest required corrective action will result in further action by the Iowa Department of Education." So they were relatively clear that there could be further action taken if the district was unable to comply. And then, two weeks after that letter from the department, the district, or not the district, yeah, the, the department, the Department of Ed received a letter from Lane & Waterman. So the district's attorney stating that the district intends on correcting the remaining IEPs, but this may not occur before the June 1st deadline. I can't speak for the department, but I think that that indication that the June 1st deadline would not be met spurred them to then send a letter on May 4th letting the district know that there would be a site visit. So this is not the way any of us wanted it to be. And, but, but here we are. And so now I need a little bit of a refresher maybe on your question from earlier, now that we've gone through the timeline. I think you were trying to get at, how did we get here? And why did I go to the department? That's why I wanted to get through the timeline.
You know, and the front of my mind is the State Department of Ed official saying, this has never happened before. And I'm trying, I'm trying to get a gauge on whether this relationship, you know, it's, if we can kiss and make up or the type of thing that, that... I have, I have concerns with leadership because this isn't a failure by teachers or staff. This is a failure by leadership at the top. And I think both, both parties are equal, anyway, I shouldn't say equally, but both parties have a, have a role to play in this. And I, I go back to the waiting as itself. We could say that maybe you weren't providing enough services to us, that our waiting was low. And for years, we were getting the funding we should have for students that needed those extra services. Or it's a, or a situation we get caught up, it sets the red flag for you. As far as the problems with the, with doing the IEPs themselves, if you're a part of that group, you're part of the problem if you're not solving, solving the issues. You following? As far as, you know, I, I, you know, the blocked format or the, or the, you know, the boilerplate IEPs, that type of thing, I know that was a concern, that there was a lot of similarities, which, like I say, from my standpoint, I would think that there'd be a lot of similarities because a lot of students have the same, you know, needs and ultimate goals. And I think that there is going to be some boilerplate to that, examples. But I, I guess, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at with you guys is, you know, going forward, I want to make sure that our students don't suffer and that our students benefit. And that's, that's foremost in my mind is how we get this corrected in going forward. And when we've got a situation where we have administration fail to recognize your regulatory authority, that's a huge issue to get passed. And I understand, you know, when you're given the deadline, you may not like it, but dug on it, you got to comply if it's, if it's the regulatory authority. And I made the example of a policeman putting the lights on behind you and you pull over, or you call your lawyer and drive on. Well, eventually, you're going to be stopped. And you can't expect the patrolman to have a very nice attitude when he gets talking to you about why he wanted to pull you over in the first place. So, you know, like I say, I want to get a, get a read on if, if we can go forward with this or if this is the type of a thing where you feel that we've got to have some changes in our leadership.
In response to the last... In response to the last part of what you said, that is not my decision. As far as changes in anything regarding the Iowa City District, that's up to you and to district administration. I agree that we share responsibility and I agree that keeping the kids and the families of Iowa City Community Schools forefront in every decision that we make, that's where we've got to maintain our focus. And I think that that will help us if we do that. I think that will help us to find our way through this issue if we keep our eyes on the kids. There are some, there were some policies that were in place that were identified by the department that Iowa City Schools have already moved on, that I think will have a good impact on resolving some of the compliance issues that have been identified. One of which, there was a review process after IEP teams met where coaches and coordinators or, and others, I'm not exactly sure who, would review IEPs. That process, Iowa City Schools was asked to stop that process and they have done that. I think that will take the district a long ways towards, you know, changing that internal district policy will go a long ways towards resolving some of the compliance issues that we found or that were found by the department. So, you know, it's those internal things and systemic things that I would encourage all of us to kind of keep our eye on that ball. It's very easy when we have issues like this to kind of make a check sheet and kind of go, "Yep, we checked that one off and we fixed that IEP and we did this and we did that and you check them off." That's, that's fine, we need to do that. But the other thing that we need to do is, is look systemically at the system and get those things fixed because otherwise, we're going to be right back here again in a couple of years. And we don't want that and you don't want that. And so we've got to get that systemic issue resolved.
Correct.
And not, and not use this as a check sheet, kind of a check them off as we go.
Right. And you know, and I'm sure you've seen these, our IEP team attendance.
Yes, and those are the things I was referencing that they've made good movement on.
But they also draw the light that, you know, the leadership ahead didn't recognize the violations that they were constantly doing.
You know, what, what happens, and I was a servant as an elementary principal and middle school principal for 12 years. And oftentimes, I'd have AEA staff that would say, and they typically say, "You can't do that." What they meant was, "You're violating the rules and procedures of special ed." And, you know, as a principal, I didn't like that very much. But, you know, in the end, I would also figure out, yeah, they're trying to keep me from getting in trouble. And I would actually change what I was going to do. That's how the system typically works. And in this case, we just didn't get there. We didn't get things changed and, you know, for a lot of different reasons. And so I think moving forward, we'll do that in a very positive way moving forward, so.
So I always struggle when people have things where they have discretion. Because there's always bias and discretion. And so my question is, if you have the discretion to give a district a year and this is a never seen, has never ever happened before situation and absolutely keep the kids first, all of that, was there a reason why, because there was like 100 changes, that they would have to have 100 meetings or something like that, right? Was there a reason why, given that this wasn't a tier decision, is get as many done by, with 50%, 75% done by June 1st with no longer than October 1st, 100% completion? Like how, I'm trying to figure out why there wasn't options, given that this was a, I've never seen this before happen. And I understand the, but I'm just thinking about 100 meetings, getting, as a person who coordinates people, trying to get that many meetings and things, I can see how that can be stressful at the end of the school year and how it could, this is not excusing any of all those things, but I'm trying to understand your thought process behind knowing the crunch that that would put on the staff.
I'll let Maria answer the deadline, but I will say that when you say this has never happened before, the only thing that's never happened before is the district didn't comply and the department came out and did this.
I'm talking about the 100.
But I'm just saying that that's the only thing, schools have been, have received non-compliance before. I've been in this for 15 years. We've sat at schools for non-compliance before, they've done the compliance and moved forward, board probably didn't even know about it. Because it's administrative thing, get it done, taken care of. So therefore, the only thing that's, that's really unique about this is the department got involved. And then as far as the deadline.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you for that, for clarifying that question. And Joe kind of said what I was going to say. The unprecedented nature of this was the attorney involvement and then, and then our response of, "We need some help to figure out how to make this move forward." And then the district, or then the department moving forward. That was the thing that's never happened before. There have been other districts that have been written up over the years around non-compliance similar to this. And so that's not unprecedented at all. So as far as my thinking, my thinking at the time was, we could have a budget implication for the district. And so I visited with Steve about that in December, end of December. And we together, you know, we were, he knew that I had up to a year. And so we talked through that and because of the three rationale that I provided earlier around starting, starting the new school year with a clean slate, because Iowa City just went through the OCR visit a couple of years ago, we didn't want to drag this out. You know, that was a frankly, at least from our standpoint, fairly miserable process getting through the OCR visit and I think it was for the district as well. We didn't want to drag this out any longer than it had to be. And we believed at the time, in the end of December when the letter was written, that we would be able to meet that June 1st deadline. And so we thought that if we could meet it, it's in the best interest of everyone to move forward with it.
Now, you believe in budget implications. Can you expand on that?
Yeah. You know, in the, in the, in the initial compliance letter that came from the AEA, there were some non-compliant issues that were identified for a number of students. A nice summary might be that the services were not very well spelled out in a lot of the IEPs. And so it wasn't really clear exactly what services some of the students were getting.
And if I can just, and I apologize for interrupting, it's just I'll forget if I don't. Who's responsible for spelling that out?
The IEP teams.
Okay. Which is made up of?
Which is made up of.
District staff, parents, and yourselves.
Correct. Yep. And so we needed to do a better job with that. And so we, and so as those compliance issues were addressed during IEP meetings, we thought that it was possible that waitings could go up or down. We didn't know what would happen. If, if we spelled out the services to be more, more completely, it's possible that waitings would have gone up. It's also possible that IEP teams would have agreed that services were going to be reduced in some way. So we really didn't know what was going to happen with that. And so in an effort to try and protect the district, as far as knowing what their budget was going to look like and being able to get that resolved before the department finalized, finally finalized all of the waitings, that was why that January 21st or 22nd date was even being talked about. And so that's the budget implication. Steve and I agreed that that was unreasonable and that we would, if there were, if there were budget implications, we'd figure that out with the department later. That didn't come to pass. There were no compliance issues around waiting, I want to make that very clear. It was all around the clarity of the services and that we were unsure if parents knew exactly what their kids were getting. We wanted to make sure that everybody was clear.
So as far as funding, funding isn't, is not to be affected?
As, as far as I know, that is true. Now, as these meetings occur, could waitings go up or down? Absolutely, they will in every district when new meetings occur.
And as part of the state review, is there a fiscal review by the state or is that?
They did it.
Is that ongoing or?
They did it as a part.
They did it and any change or anything at that point or not?
So just want to process wise, if we spend enough on the past, does anybody have new optics or information, questions in the past? Maybe we spend the rest of our time.
Well, yeah, I got a few questions still.
Oh, yeah, no, we're not done.
Well, so let's get to it then, except we're not picking the one I thought the future would be.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure I can remember all this stuff. So what happened on December 10th, where it says, "Discuss preliminary findings." At that point, your finding John and Martin's?
Correct.
And what you found then, how does that compare to what state, to the visit, what we see in the visit from the state now? Were there differences?
The state, the Department of Ed affirmed the citations that the AEA found. And then they found multiple other issues that need to be addressed.
And were they reviewed in the same time period?
I was not a part of the site visit from the department, so I can't answer that question.
How did you decide what time period to be?
Good question. I looked at IEPs that were touched in August, September, October of 2015. So I tried.
That means there was a change.
There was a change. There was an amendment, because remember, there were lots of amendments. So I looked at any of them, any IEPs that had amendments. And any IEPs that, you know, there are a lot of IEP reviews that happen right before count. And so any IEP that had a change, I took a look at.
And so, but anything that wasn't changed, you've not looked at?
Correct.
Did those, do you know if they were not looked at?
I can't answer that.
I think the random sampling, but not for.
Right. Every IEP in the district, I can, I can affirm that, that every IEP was not looked at by either the AEA or the department, but a large number of them were, the department did a sample.
It's sort of random sampling, it wasn't necessarily specifically.
What was the percentage of the sample? Fifty was in the random samples? That's the number that they polled?
Fifty, not 50%.
Additional, no, no.
Fifty, 50s.
Randomly sampled IEPs.
Right.
So then the remaining ones, are they going to be reviewed now to make sure there's no problems with the department?
That would be something that the district probably would want to think about as they're doing annual reviews and as they come due, even though they're not on the citations list, it would be in the best interest of everybody to take a strong look at them and make sure that things are up to snuff and clear.
And it just, in the very first box on the page, it says, "Some initial concerns brought to resolution." Was that anything similar? What were those concerns and are they related at all to what we're talking about?
They really aren't. We had a number of questions around Medicaid at that time that we were trying to get resolved. We were working with Jim Donahue at the department, trying to get some questions answered. We were confused kind of about the process and how that Medicaid was working. I know that the district had some questions as well, so that's just one example. You know, we work through multiple IEP issues on a weekly basis. We work pretty closely together really on special education issues. This just became a large issue that got larger, unfortunately.
So part of what I'm hearing is, you know, what caught your attention was the change in waiters, but that the non-compliance were not really about the changes in waiters, they were all the things.
Correct.
Kind of makes, it makes me wonder, and you must, like you said, if other districts did inside of things. You know, if you were to just pick a district at random and do this sort of review, would you expect to find this level of non-compliance is or would this be any?
I would say that if I looked at any district, I will find issues of non-compliance. I do think that the number and the level of non-compliance that was found by me and by the department would be not typical.
And I'm sorry if I keep coming back to this, but is Grandma AEA or the school district director of special ed or her coordinators, who's responsible for making sure that the IEPs are compliant? Who has final authority or sign off prior to their being submitted and given to parents and/or archive?
And that was a question that came to us earlier, so I do have some notes on that. I think it's on page 10 of your packet. But compliance is the lowest bar of quality that we have. So there's best practice up here and there's compliance down here. Compliance is the lowest bar of acceptability. And all of us, every professional that attends an IEP meeting is responsible for compliance. We all are licensed, any professional teacher, AEA staff member who's in those IEP meetings are licensed by the state of Iowa. And that license requires practices within professional standards and making sure that our practices and policies align with IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So there is no one person who's responsible for compliance and if something goes wrong, it's your fault. It's all of our responsibility. We're always trying to get to best practice. But compliance is that lowest bar and we are all responsible. At, you know, IEP meetings, the IEP team meets, they are responsible for drafting the IEP and all of the people who are drafting the IEP are responsible for compliance. And I know that there has been some interest expressed in having the AEA be responsible for compliance. That is a system that, I actually asked the department if that's even possible. And, you know, they talked me through this whole licensure issue and also that you can't have one entity be completely responsible because if the other entity doesn't work with you, if we're the entity, let's just pretend the other entity doesn't work with you, it's not going to, it's not going to fly. And so we have to work together on that. We all have to be aware of it. We have to be working together in order to make this happen. And, you know, it's, it isn't, it's just not going to work to, to try and establish blame of one entity or another. We share it. We share responsibility for that.
It's not really, but I think it's a great point. If everybody's accountable, it always counts.
Right.
And if you share the leadership, shouldn't there be a single point, somebody who at the end is?
And it's probably, we, we hold the general supervision.
But you can rotate leadership, not, don't get me wrong, if there's sick people involved, this person this time, this person that, you know what I mean? It seems like there should be somebody who's the single point at the end.
We hold the general supervision.
We all have shared leadership. We're the ones that got interested in the state, even though you guys were in every of you too.
It always goes down to home, so I mean, that's how it works. I just, you know, again, I wonder, I just think there should be a single point of ownership at the end. But that's, you guys can, you can figure that out.
I guess, I guess the next question is, with the compliance, since you're saying that's the bottom line, which to me is just not okay forever. We, if we have the ability to ride steak and shrimp, we give people chili, I'm not okay for that. I'm just being honest. It's great, but if you guys take them off there and you hold them back, that's not right. So, sorry, asking you to make a point. But what I'm saying is like, if everybody is responsible and we have this many citations, what's the next step about? Forget compliance. I, that my, as a board member, my expectation is that we are being compliant. So, you know, and I know that there's professional development, et cetera, out there that is supposed to help us come up to this best practice piece, but my thing is going to be about, when are we getting this done and how are we making sure that we're being compliant all the way through? It just, OCR, department educate, this, this is ridiculous to me. So knowing that this is like a thousand kids or something, this is a small, this is a small number comparison to this larger group of kids, but they have very specialized things that they specifically need. How do we raise the bar as a partnership with the district and Grandma AEA and forget compliance? Like I don't even want to hear about that. Like how do we go to the next level or the next levels of making sure that this doesn't happen again? Like seriously? Like I don't, I don't know who at the table is specific, obviously I can't come from a policy level, but like, do we need to create a policy? Because to me, this ends up in situations where children are getting hurt, people need to lose jobs. Like honestly, that's just my personal opinion. So at this point, we are where we are and we need to move forward. So we need to come up with some way to ensure that our kids are getting what they need. I mean, that's across the board in general. But in this case, knowing that this is a population where they have legal documents... But in this case, knowing that this is a population where they have legal documents saying that I am required to have certain things and we're not doing that, you know, and I'm, I'm not saying we're not doing a lot of stuff, so let me back up as people's feelings get hurt. I'm not saying people are not doing what they're supposed to be doing. Are there cases where people have slipped and have missed some things? I think so. Obviously, we have this report that says that. So my thing is, not going and yelling at anybody about X, Y, and Z, but this school year coming up, how are we going to make sure that we're staying on the money and making sure that these kids are getting what they need? And that's where I am as a board member, and we, I, I'm saying, I appreciate, obviously, y'all getting some money and there's some stuff happening, so thank you for that, but as in making sure for the future that we are making sure from our district, we're doing our part, you all are doing our part, we're doing this as partners together to make sure that our children are getting the best practices and getting the best work. That, that's where I stand with it. Have a personal investment in that, as a community member in that. So I, I, I know that there are cases where this is being done well. That's, that's a part we have to remember. Some, this is not every single student, this, these are some situations, there are some situations that are different weight, obviously, about the services they're providing, but as a district, I think, and as a partner in this, that if we're all responsible, we find out who those point people are. We got a thousand kids, we need to find a way to split it up, and somebody is double checking and making sure. And I don't know, Steve, but that's a part of that quarterly report we were referring to, that we're saying at this point, we've checked 25% of all of our IEPs and we're in compliance, we've checked 50%. You know, I mean, something like that where we can, as a board, be able to, to be able to wait that those things are happening, because other than that, we're going to have to wait for the next investigation to really be able to know that, so. And that's just my two cents, I mean, we could take what we want from it, but yes, we need to move forward. Obviously, this is not a dissolve relationship because this is way too much stuff to find somebody else to do. So if that's some, if some of you all's playing, then, you know, that's news to me, but I think we can work better together.
So how do we make this, my soapbox on this thing is, how do we make this a year from now, best thing that's ever happened? And I agree with you, right? Let's stop talking compliance today, start talking about that class and we have to really do compliance. So how do we, a year from now, we best of us, and we go, man, that's the best thing that ever happened to us?
Well, I think it does get to those relationship things and, and it is, you know, making sure we have the, the regular structured meetings about and understanding roles and responsibilities of both the AEA and the school district. I think that's pretty clear, that's got to, that's got to happen, we know that, and, and going forward. We also need to say that as a, as an administration on Grantwood's part, on Iowa City's part, at Board of Directors on Grantwood AEA and on Iowa City's part, that we're committed to doing what we need to do to make sure that we're not back here, we move forward a positive way on behalf of students. And as Phil said, we're, we're the advocate for Iowa City, we're the advocate for students first, and we're advocates for Iowa City schools. So I, I don't want that to split hairs on that, but we really, it's, it's got to be about kids and moving forward. And I think that, that the commitment is here to do that, but we all got to say, on the bottom line, is we're going to be committed to doing that going forward. You know, and obviously, you know, we, we spent a lot of time around compliance tonight and, but we know that if we partner together, that students are going to be, are benefit, they're going to be better off for that. So, you know, the special education thing generated a lot of discussion, but I don't want it to paint an inaccurate perception of other positive work taking place between our organizations, because there is a lot of positive work taking place, and that could turn into a positive going forward also. So our leadership's going to remain focused on that, and collaborating and together to benefit students. And I think the, the work that really lies ahead will pave the way for greater opportunities for students and for us to work together. So I, I mean, I think it's very possible that, that we move forward in a very positive way. But we're going to have to be, as Jim Collins said in his book Good to Great, conduct autopsies without blame, get, get past who we think was at fault for whatever, and we're going to move forward and do it the right, do the right work.
Yeah, I think, but I also think it's important that we don't forget. Because I think sometimes we, we try to move forward and it feels good to be like, y'all, we messed up, let's move forward, but I think it's important to hold this in our memory as a, a point of, we can't ever come back here ever again, and that we have to move forward.
I would agree with you, because I never want to go through it again.
I'm sorry?
I would agree with you, because I never wanted to go through that again.
I, I don't want to say, I mean, you know, it's one of my family's-
Most negative thing in my career, I would say, yes.
This is the state first, we don't want to repeat.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and this one final one, we briefly alluded to Medicaid, but, you know, are we, do we have concerns with federal compliance? Is there any concerns of a Medicaid audit at some point in time, if we have issues at that point?
Well, we don't monitor Medicaid, but we also are part, a part of it, so we're, we're involved in it, so we get, we will ask those questions if we think we're not doing it right. Medicaid is, is a strange one, because if federal government comes in and does a Medicaid audit, it's been done across the state, school districts have Medicaid audits, and it had to pay back money. So that's, for us, if we have concerns, it's just a heads up more than anything else. We don't have any compliance in spending Medicaid. But I know some districts have been hit pretty hard on have to pay back money, and that's, that's not a pleasant thing.
Just want to circle back to one thing, as far as the students that are in this district, the assignments, the level assignments that, that they were, that our special education departments operate under and are providing services for our students, students were receiving, if I read the report correctly, the students were receiving supports they were supposed to have for levels that they were assigned, would that be a correct statement?
I would have to go back and confirm that in the report. I don't remember if you all remember that that statement was in there?
So that didn't find any examples of that?
Okay.
I mean, they only did a random sample, so.
Yeah, there were several of those IEPs that had to be reviewed, so they could change.
On-site visit, we went follow students to make sure that they had their services in place. So when, when they were here, they went and followed ones, did we get seven different schools?
So the procedure opportunities could be two issues, that's all.
Students were not, were not, were not, not receiving the services that they were supposed to.
I can say that I did not find any issues with that as an AEA. We did not, we did not cite the district for any issues regarding that.
Correct.
I, I've read, I've read the department report several times, but I just, I don't want to say unequivocally, if you want me to look, I, to confirm that, but.
Just, I just want to circle back around to that. Okay, thanks.
So you've seen the plan, the collaborative plan, is it sufficient?
Yeah, and I think that the department assigning an implementation advisor is a great idea, that holds us both accountable for a bit, you know, to, to make sure that we're going to continue to work together and get the work done, so I think that's a very positive thing. I didn't even expect that to come out of it, but this is uncharted territory, I get that. So I think that was a good move on the department's face, because they can be that independent person out there saying to us as the AEA, you need to do this, or to the district, you need to do this.
Do we need any help get that done because they haven't, they haven't signed one of them, right?
They're still in the process, they initially identified two. We said either one of those was fine with us, after working with the two of them, neither one of them were able to commit to what we need. So they went back to the drawing board, they're looking at other candidates. We understand, hopefully, that they're going to have someone bring forward to us very soon.
So it's very active, okay. Yeah, the first, the, the first two that came forward, I think, could have been great choices, but they just wouldn't commit to the time. So they're looking for, basically looking for a retired person that has a strong special ed background that could come and do that.
So it's not a department person and not an AEA person, which I think's great, I think that's the right move, so.
And, and that individual's going to be reporting to us, and I think it would be important for AEA to have a representative when we have those report outs here at the board. So all of us are at the same, getting the same information and the same report.
Sure. So any questions we haven't asked, or we should have asked?
I think you asked the right questions, I asked, I think you asked the right questions going forward, what we need to do, and I think those, that structure is in place, and I think that we can meet that expectation collectively.
Maria and Steve, and perhaps, Steve, you're the person that can answer this, the makeup of the IEP teams, is it still the policy that at these teams, a building administrator is present in addition to the AEA person, in addition to the teachers and, and all of the support staff, and the general ed teacher, and the special ed teacher? So a building administrator is at each one of the IEP teams, because I think that is critically important, that that take place. And I'm so sorry, because there is the most important-
Well, there has to be someone with the power of the purse at the, at the meeting, correct?
And that is the administrative designated A, which is the principal, yes.
And I'm, I'm-
Make sure that-
That just doesn't-
Or delegate or-
But we have some teachers over, so if you have some parents that will come, for those, we'll make sure you include them in that thing. Absolutely.
We did have some information in our educational services and service plans, and we can continue to review that with the administration, I think, through our regional administrators, so I, I mean, I don't want to drag out any longer, I think it's important of what we got through tonight, so. But we'll take any other questions that you have, if it's helpful.
I'd love to see at some point this week, going forward, you guys decided, a simple flow chart, the process, who really owns each step? And I, I struggle with everybody's calendar. I'd love to see that. I'm Mr. Simple, right? I, I deal a lot in regulatory business, like FDA, border health, around the world, I can tell you, more complicated you make it, the more you fail, the more simple or automated you make it, the more you're successful. So I just wondered about simplicity and clear ownership. And to Latasha's point, going forward, because here's some of the data, red flags, you know, what would, whether it's health checks or audits or, how would we see this going forward? Because I'm thinking, but again, for best in class, you know, the, your health checks are going to be pretty simple, I would like to, a simple flow chart with ownership of the, how would we, what are the indicators to know this is never happening?
I think we can do that, I just want to, I don't want to lead you astray that we'll be able to assign ownership to everything, because, well, we would have to, we would have to change IDEA and-
Give it.
I don't have that authority, but, so I just want to make sure that that's, but, but certainly we can, we can give you a flow chart of how things happen and who's involved.
Any else for, in just a response to Brian's question, I, I feel a little uncomfortable if people walk away feeling like, oh, everybody got the services they needed, it's like, or the state report saying it's, it's different from that. And I'll just, you know, just repair it for the initial, so every interview group reference to require corrective action is merely quote procedural compliance or a simple quote documentation issued. Interviews and document reviews indicated that the miscommunication you leave violations as procedural in nature related to a message to district staff, prepared to parents, in some cases in the IEP, and so. The potential implication of violations, whether it was more than procedural documentation, failure to provide parents in timely manner, failure to note by parents changes in services, failure to fully describe the separate services that are required, failure to add to the described by a student, need separate services, all have potential impact on the delivery of the curriculum curriculum called education. The Iowa Department of Education recommends that the district use the corrective actions or documents reported as opportunity to clarify the important distinction and sometimes causal relationship between procedural and substantive noncompliance. And, you know, if, if we're going to take something into the future, that's one of the main things I want to take into the future, that, you know, those two things are not separate, and if there are noncompliances that take in documentation, there's a reason for why it has to be documented the way that it is, because it can have an effect, maybe we just don't know if something's not fully described the way it's supposed to be.
But I believe that you, you mentioned in what you just read, the potential implication of the violations. The potential implication. Right, because we don't know it's not that American. So I just don't think you can rule out that, if somebody might not get the services they needed, because the documentation doesn't, doesn't give us the information.
And that's why we have to go back through some of those. I mean, that's clear, that's, that's our, that's our job going forward.
Okay, so Joe, thank you, Maria, thank you.
You're welcome.
Everybody, Karen, thank you for board support, and I don't know, I guess I'll just go along with us, so.
Keep that dialogue open before we proceed. I don't know.
Exactly. Is there anything else you want to cover, or the, Steve, same as it was? If you guys can think about one, one you can, I don't want to make sense.
Well, I'll work with them. The next item on the agenda was our, hopefully was going to be our anticipation, we'd have our implementation advisor when we initially set this agenda, and that didn't come to pass, but recommending, or taking Phil's recommendation into account, we'll work with the AEA to make sure that as we schedule those, once the implementation advisor is onboard, and we're working together in that triangle of relationship, that as we set up those opportunities, we need on a monthly basis to report out to the board, that we work with the AEA to ensure that they are able to provide somebody to assist them at the work.
All right, very good.
Thanks.
Are we ready to adjourn? Are there any votes to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Aye, gives me to adjourn.